Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May meeting of the Middleboro School Committee. We have a long agenda tonight, so we're going to get started, but I do want to make mention to everybody as usual. If people have comments, they can put them in the comments section and we will address them. I know tonight we're going to talk about the reopening of the high school, so if you have questions, you're more than welcome to do that and we'll address those at that time. So next up on our agenda is a report from our student rep Natalia Parkinson, so I'll ask Sean to bring up Natalia and we'll hear from Natalia. Welcome Natalia.
Thank you. Hi. So for this week's update, starting with the MAC, everyone has settled into their new routines with full in-person learning. Our teachers are thrilled to have their students in front of them every day and the kids seem to enjoy being here on a daily basis. Teachers have reported that their classes have really come together and connected with each other more since being in full person learning. Despite the opening restrictions, these kindergarteners have found ways to play and build relationships. They've had another fun enrichment activity yesterday with the Bubble Guy and are looking to plan some of the end of the year activities, including visits to the complex, field day, and a virtual art show. For MKG, MKG just had another successful week of ticket redemption at the school store. They want to thank the families for their donations to the PTA to make the school store such a success. The first week of in-person MCAS testing begins next week. Just a reminder for all students to have a good night's sleep the night before their test, as well as a good breakfast that morning. They are excited to be planning the end of the year activities for all students, especially 5th grade. Lastly, congratulations to Mr. O'Brien's 5th graders on a great job on their performance of Colonial Theater. For NMS, the first thing, Student Council just finished their Earth Day decorating contest and Mrs. Weaver's class had the best overall. Most innovative was Mrs. Manning's class, most school spirited was Mr. Leonard's class, and most festive was Mrs. Doolan's class. The girls softball team record is currently 6-0, the boys baseball team is 5-1. Both teams are off to a great start and representing NMS Tigers very well. After-school academic support began this week for students who need additional support getting caught up on assignments. This support takes place on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons and will end on Thursday, June 10th. Currently, there are about 45 students participating. For the month of May, they are hosting Tie-Dye Tuesday Spirit Days. For MHS, to start, we have officially moved into the new high school. The transition went very well and full in-person learning begins next Monday on May 17th. Congrats to the class of 2022 for winning the annual Powderpuff Game against the seniors. Unified Track began yesterday, May 12th, and there is still an opportunity to sign up to be a partner. Contact Mrs. Lane or find the family, find the sign-ups on Family ID. Yesterday, the MHS Student Council held their first in-person meeting of the year. We painted rocks and created a rock garden for the new grounds, had a scavenger hunt, and played yard games. If any student wants to run for a Student Council Executive Board position, the nomination forms are due by tomorrow, Friday, May 14th at 2:00 PM. You have to email Mr. Dyer in order to receive the nomination form. The class of 2022 is having a senior step-up celebration on Saturday, June 20th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Thanks.
Thank you Natalia. Does anyone have any questions for Natalia? Natalia, how are you liking the new school?
I love it. It's so nice. It's very technologically advanced. It's so cool.
That's cool. A little different than the old one? Okay. Any other questions for Natalia? Well Natalia, thank you very much and good luck. We'll see you soon. Next item on our agenda is school committee members. Does any school committee member have anything they wish to bring up? Excellent. Seeing none, then I will move on. We have our two co-presidents here, Sam and Kate, so I'll welcome them. Sam, you look like you're outside.
I am. It's kind of nice out here. It's like still bright. So that's always lovely. But thank you for having us. I don't really have a lot of things that people don't know about happening. The hybrid's ending and everyone but the remote cohort is going full person next Monday. And students and staff that I've heard from are, that are going back are very excited about it. The seniors' last day is only nine days away in class days on the 26th, and so we're just trying to push them and get them through to graduation, which is pretty exciting. And members are just trying to get through the year. It's been a very long year, it seems, and we're tired like everybody else, but we're pushing through to the end. Kate?
Thank you for having us again. Let's see, since we've been here in person with you guys, we've gone back full in person, April 5th, K to 8 or pre-K to 8. It's been over a month. It's going smoothly, very, very smoothly. We're preparing now for MCAS. The next three weeks will have our MCAS dates for grades 3 through 5, and also at the middle school, I'm sure. We have one session per subject this year for 3 through 5, which is nice. So that would be one session of BLA, one session of math, and then also in grade 5, one session of science. We want to thank anyone who was able to appreciate us during Appreciation Week this year and also previously to that when they helped us get through the winter and early spring doldrums in March, and I want to personally thank my own students, one who brought me these beautiful flowers, and one who brought me some gift cards for coffee. And lastly, we're really excited. I know Mrs. Doak is coming. I don't want to steal her thunder, but we're really excited at the complex and specifically at the Berklin to have our assistant dog Prince. He's amazing and we're glad that he was featured on the front page. The Middleboro Gazette this week, and thank you to Mrs. Doak for bringing him to us. He really brightens the day. When that dog leans into you, you feel the love.
Any questions for the co-presidents? I just, I want to thank you both. You had decided that this would probably be your last meeting of this calendar year until we get into, and I would just want to thank you. I mean, we've met a lot, you, you guys, me and Brian. I think we've worked out issues over and over again that made best for staff and obviously the students. You've been open and receptive the whole time and I really appreciate that. Perfect example is I know other schools that just settled their MOA last week. So I think it's, it's been great and I've enjoyed working with the both of you and I look forward to hopefully a whole different year next year. So I just wanted to say.
Thank you, Rich. We agree. It's been great working with you guys too, and let's keep, keep our fingers crossed for next year.
Absolutely. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
With that, I will turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report, and but before that, Mr. Lynch, I think we need to point out that there, there's a major correction that needs to be made clearly from the Brockton Enterprise. You did not graduate in 1999.
I didn't?
No, you did not, sir. And so try as they might to give you 20 extra years, I don't believe they can. So you are a proud graduate of the class of 1979, not 1999.
So you just.
I'm just pointing it out.
You just put 20 years on my life. Thank you.
A lot of the community was very upset by that and I wanted to address it now.
No, I make no bones about it. I'm a very proud graduate of the class of 1979. I entered into the building in the fall of 1974 when the, the high school that's going to be torn down was, was very young at that time and apparently so was I. But it is, it was a pleasure the other night and we're going to talk about that in a little while. But Mark Vasconcelles, who's the photographer from the Enterprise, did write that up and mistook the, or wrote the 999 instead of 79, so. But nobody was fooled, especially me, but thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you for that intro and thank you for the transition from Kate Lazarovich, who is at the Berklin School. Our first guest, a part of my report, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, good evening, is going to talk a little bit about Prince and get to meet Prince, the therapy dog. Just to give you just a little bit of background again, and for those folks who are tuned in at home or from home. Prince is part of an organization that comes from a group called the Needs, world-class service dogs. We happen to have a school adjustment counselor who happens to work at the Berklin School, who happened to be a sort of a stay-at-home mom for a couple of these training dogs, and really, really took a liking to the process and took a liking to the program, and applied, and it took a while, and it's been a process. But she was finally sort of awarded, if you will, a dog. It's a family dog for her at home, but it's a service dog at the school. She is, she is a school adjustment counselor at the Berklin. The dog is housed at the Berklin. There's kennels at the Berklin, and she does work at the Berklin. There will be opportunities in the future for, and there have been already. We've, I know that Prince has already visited district-wide special needs programs in the complex, and there'll be maybe more opportunities down the road. But just so folks understand that this was an initiative taken on by Ms. Doak. It was not something the school system asked her to do. It was not something the school system provided for her. We're not paying for dog food. We're not doing any of that. McLean Hospital, actually, the needs service people ask for an $8,000 donation when a dog becomes a reality in a handler's life. And that basically happened, in this case, in McLean Hospital made that donation to pay that $8,000. So the school system didn't pay the $8,000. That was done by a donation from community. So it is an needs assistant dog, and without further ado, I do want to bring Erin Doak, who has really volunteered a great deal of time, including a week away in a training center with the dog, really getting to know the dog, and you can see the dog is at Erin's home. And welcome, welcome Erin, and why don't you sort of continue on where I left off and thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely. I'm glad to be here. I must say that as well-trained as this dog is, he's not at all trained for virtual meetings, so I'm not sure how long I'll get to keep him up here, and he's exhausted, so he's slowly falling asleep. But this is Prince. He's an almost two-year-old yellow lab that needs felt was a good match for me, for my family, for my work, for my, you know, every aspect of my life. I agree with them. It's been phenomenal having him for the last, I don't know, we're almost going on two months now. He's done so much in the building, and like Superintendent Lynch said, we also had a chance to connect with one of the classrooms in MKG. So one of the things I thought I would just share with you guys would be some images of Prince's first few weeks at the building, because it's going to be hard for him and he's already falling down. He's tired. So I just wanted to share with you guys some of the pictures that I've been able to capture of his time. You know, every parent takes their first day of school photo with their kid, so here's Prince's first day of school at MK, I mean, at the Berklin. You know, you got to capture the big Berklin's best, him in front of the logo there. But then we also went around to classrooms in the beginning to do some meet and greets. He's definitely, his nose was on sniffer overload because of all the smells in the building, and all the kids were thoroughly enjoying just seeing his face. So there's a lot of moments where the kids were just kind of happy to meet him. I have commands where I can allow him to leave and walk away from me and actually go over and meet other people. And he's, and he knows what he needs to do, and then he knows to come back to me. So he has learned and knows well over 40 commands. Not all of them are going to be necessary in my role at the building, but he definitely just keeps making smiles appear on people's faces. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that this is one of his commands. It's called "my lap", and he kind of becomes like a weighted blanket for people. So this was on his actual first day there. You know, we went down and we met with another student once he is kind of settled and, you know, they just kind of get relaxed and get to pet him, and he just kind of hangs out and enjoys it. The next slide is, you know, he, some students are reading books to him. I will be honest and say that he often does just kind of fall over and fall asleep, but he definitely is there and he loves being read to. He also has been going out, I think the next slide is, we've been going out, oh, sorry, I forgot, we did visit another classroom when they were dealing with their loss of their worms. So he went down to comfort the students when their science project didn't kind of go the right way. Oh, I don't know if you guys have seen this one, but he was definitely, you know, he came in at an interesting time because he got to spend a week with the students and then the building was empty for a week, so he helped kind of reset the furniture up and we kind of had some fun taking some pictures of him cooperating with us to do the setup of the building. The next slide is just him kind of being around some of the students. This is actually one of the students in our fully virtual program that came to the building to go to our school store, so I happened to stay after school. And he got to meet some of the kids that he's only usually trying to see on, on the screen. So when they came to the building, we stuck around so that they could meet him. The next slide is recess. That's been a real big component, trying to get out so that, again, there's 500-plus kids and only one dog, so trying to get around to everybody in the building has been a little challenging, the weather, you know, the, the social distancing and all that in the classroom. So we're definitely trying to go out to recess a lot and kids come flocking over to him, as you can see. The kids thoroughly enjoy just seeing him. I know they're wearing masks, but the smiles are endless. Mr. Thompson actually got creative in his workroom and made a mailbox that is outside my office. Teachers have really utilized this with some writing assignments and kids are spending time writing letters to Prince. Kate Lazarovich's class specifically wrote him letters about books they've been reading. Kids have been sending him notes. It's just kind of a great way to connect to him since they can't always see him and we're not always able to hit every classroom. So that's been phenomenal. He's got millions of letters. It's hard to keep track of getting back to them all. Again, outside at recess, just kind of interacting with some of the kids. What's the next one? Oh, here we go. As much as he's entertaining for the kids, I think the staff is thoroughly enjoying him also. I don't know who really enjoys him more, the kids or the staff. Staff also come in and want to have some, some puppy cuddles here and there, so that's been beneficial as well. This is actually Jean Skelly's classroom. They came over to the building and they all got to kind of meet and we could show him some of his skills, some of the things he can do. And I'd love to show you guys all, some of the stuff that he can do, you know, when you guys get back to in-person meetings, we could definitely show up to a school committee meeting and you guys could get to meet him because he's just a love. Coming soon, I just threw this up on his Instagram page. I've spoken with the PTA about offering opportunities as an incentive to play with him. You know, play fetch, just kind of read to him or anything like that, so kids can use their Berklin's Best tickets and earn time with Prince. So that's going to be happening, and I know some of you are aware of his Instagram page. He has more followers than I do, but it's a good way for people that aren't necessarily in the building to kind of keep track of some of the stuff that he's doing. And I'm also sharing some stuff not only in the building, but when he's not working, because I think that's a big part to know that he's exhausted by the end of the school day, but he is still get to be a regular pet after hours.
Erin, just a quick question before we get to school committee. I just want to talk about sort of the process you went through. If somebody decided they wanted to do, to get involved in this program, they're probably looking, there's a lot of demand for these, these dogs. They're highly, highly trained. Can you talk about just the process again, so the folks at home can, can understand the time and effort you had put in prior to receiving the dog?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I was familiar with Needs ahead of time because I was a weekend puppy raiser. So, you know, these dogs are trained from birth, you know, and they're through exposure, through, you know, sights and sounds, through learning commands, learning basic obedience, stuff like that. They do have kind of an online, kind of primary application that I went through first to see if I would qualify because they only train certain kinds of dogs. They don't do anything with like medical. They don't do, you know, the ones that are fixed, that help with students recognizing diabetes or anything like that. So Needs has definitely a specific set of dogs that they train to do. And then there's an application process. Once you're kind of pre-approved for that, it took a couple of months to even get an interview set up. Once I'm approved, my application is reviewed. I think I got approved a couple of months, and then I got an interview right before the school year. They told me after my interview, because I knew the first question was, you know, when am I going to get a dog? And they said it could be anywhere from 12 to 18 months. COVID really put some delays on the training of the dogs on Needs end because of the shutdown. For those of you that have any knowledge, they use the prisons for some of the dog training, and with COVID, they took the dogs out of the prison. Prince was actually in the prison pup program, so he got some training in the prison in his early months, but other than that, you know, he was trained through the dog trainers back on campus. So I think I was really very fortunate to get matched within six months. At my training, I was with an assistant principal in Sudbury, and she was on the waitlist to get a dog for 19 months. So it's really unclear how quickly you would get matched, and I think that's the hardest part is the waiting. Like I said, I am shocked and thrilled that I only had to wait for six months, but it's very unknown because they do a tremendous job matching the right dog to the right person. I know, again, I have spoken to other, another person in the district who, you know, they want to get their own dog, possibly certified and whatnot, and I think that's a great idea. I don't know, you know, what type of stuff would have to be put in place for that to happen. So I know people are loving all the benefits of him, and I just, I pursued a certain path because I was familiar with what Needs does.
Super. Thank you very much. And Mr. Chair, I would turn it over to you and questions from the committee.
Thank you very much, Erin, for everything you're doing with Prince, and thank you to Prince. Erin, the one question I had, it was sort of a question that we, we had before, and I've seen it a couple of times with parents. What happens to kids who are allergic to the dog or who are afraid of the dog?
So I worked very closely with my school nurse to figure out who has the allergies to animals written on, you know, documentation, physical, stuff like that. So I have a list and I am kind of familiar with who those kids are. Thankfully, you know, we don't have any severe allergies at the building. We have a couple of students that, you know, if they touch, they just have to immediately go wash their hands, and I've had conversations with teachers about who that is. I've since found out, since we had him in the building, a couple other students were like, oh, I'm allergic to dogs, but it wasn't anything that was on paperwork in the building. So then I would reach out to that parent and be like, can you clarify this for me? You know, is this really a true allergy? And, you know, so I've had direct communication with those parents because not everyone documents and thinking there's going to be an animal in their building. So that, I think, has been a great connection that I've been able to make. I'm, in regards to the fears, we've had a few students, particularly ones that are, you know, working with Christian Cardoza with, you know, just unfamiliar, new to, new to the country, who seeing dogs, he was explaining to me, in a, inside, as like a pet, is unfamiliar and uncomfortable for them. I actually had a student write me a letter saying I'm afraid, but she has since slowly come up because they see how calm he is and how low-key and not aggressive, and they, she started touching him on her, on her own. You know, and I'm willing to embrace that because a lot of kids see and smile when they see him. So he, he is kind of infectious and a magnet for attention. So the couple of kids that, there are two or three kids particularly that have had fears, and they have slowly, just in the last couple of weeks, come up and started to pet him. So it's been, it's been tremendous to see.
That's fantastic, and thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Thank you so much. I remember when we heard about this, feels like not that long ago, but I think it was, it was a little, little while ago. It's so exciting. I think we had a couple of the dogs in the Nichols Middle School auditorium, just to show how long ago this was, but thank you, and I love the pictures and the article. It's so awesome. My question for you is, and I know that this is a unique situation. We're just super lucky to have had you and to, that you had this interest and you made this happen on your own. And, but I think as things go, you know, people are looking and saying like, oh, man, I wish, I wish we could have Prince at, at our school too. And, and obviously you have a job and responsibilities at HBB, and I just wondered, for the, you know, we heard that you visit the MKG a little bit, and I just wondered what your, you know, availability was while still taking care of your, you know, primary job to also visit the MKG kids?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's going to be something I have to look at year to year. You know, my schedule and my availability is a little different this year. And actually, you know, so Mrs. Skelly, she reached out to me because she had a student there who was having a hard time, and he actually used to be an HBB kid and recently transferred over. So she, she, and again, if, if, if people reach out to me and I can make it work, then yeah, I definitely want to be able to, you know, in those specific moments, be able to share him. He's, like I said, he's a love, and she, she really appreciated it, and then her class all wrote him notes, so she was able to piggyback. So I, I'm definitely willing, you know, in different situations to entertain the idea. The one thing that I did make sure Mrs. Skelly did prior to me coming over is do her research in regards to the allergies of her students. You know, I don't know what that exists. I don't know what that is over at MKG, so I want to make sure that that stuff is all covered as well. I know Berklin. I'm housed in Berklin, you know, so to, to think about that district-wide would be a little overwhelming for me. But I'm definitely willing to have conversations, and I think, you know, if instances come up throughout the school year, you know, I would be willing to take him over there. You know, the counseling staff's always willing to respond to situations, and, you know, he would just be another tool that I take.
Excellent. Thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Yeah, definitely.
Other questions? Meg, go right ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you because this is so great. Everything about this is great. Not only for the therapeutic aspect, but the fact that they're using it for curriculum is awesome too. And you did this all on your own. You know, nobody came to you. Nobody asked you to do this. You're not getting anything extra. I just think that this is awesome. So thank you for taking the initiative to help our kiddos.
Thank you. It's, it's so rewarding. It really is, except for all the fur, but it's been great.
Rich, you have your hand up again. Go right ahead.
Sorry, I just thought of this. I guess this is more of a question through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Lynch. Are there, are there particular things that we might look for, almost treating this as like a pilot, that if certain things go really well and we just happen to have the right people in the right places that we might consider as a district, expanding this, knowing full well that this was definitely a very unique situation?
Well, I would say that if there are, like, I think Erin made a reference to it, if, if there are other people within the district who are interested, they could certainly pursue this on their own. There would not be an expectation on the district's part, I don't think. We couldn't ask people to do this. This is something that would have to be done voluntarily because it asks a lot of the person. You know, Erin needs to feed this dog for the rest of its life. We're not paying for the food. You know, and it's her pet. It's a lovely pet. It's a gorgeous dog, and there are great advantages to it. But there, with those advantages comes the fact that when she travels, her travels will be limited because she either has to bring the dog or find an appropriate place for the dog to go. You know, so all of that involved, and it's also a family pet, so I think it's a 24/7 endeavor. And if we have school adjustment counselors or teachers or whoever that were willing to do this, I know that the, the person at the Framingham High School was a high school teacher, right, Erin, as I recall?
In Framingham, it was. He was a teacher kind of in a sub-separate classroom.
Yeah.
And I also, I just trained with an assistant principal in, of an elementary school. So I know school resource officers have them from Needs, teachers, special ed teachers, PE teachers, counselors, principals, you know. The role doesn't necessarily matter, but.
So, so I guess to further answer your question, Rich, if this is something that people are interested in doing, obviously the school committee supported this and are supporting Erin, and the school is supporting Erin. So I would hope that in the future, if people are willing, ready, willing and able to, to enter into this process, that we would support them too. Because I think as a pilot, we've, we've really, Prince has been with us for a month and it's, it's obviously been very successful thus far. So, you know, he's going to be with us for a while. Erin's certainly going to be with us for a while. So, you know, we hope to perhaps expand it, but it would not be something that there would be an expectation upon employees for that. Uh, so, you know, we hope to perhaps expand it, but it would not be something that there would be an expectation upon employees for that.
Sure, sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch.
Yep.
Other questions? Well, Aaron, thank you very much. And I get to say goodnight, Prince.
Well, he's already asleep down here on my lap. But yeah, and again, once, you know, I'm, I'm definitely willing to come back to a meeting, you know, and so that you guys can actually meet him in person. Once we get back to that.
And, and thanks, thanks again, Aaron. And I, I know the dog here, I have two yellow labs at home. And then on Saturday mornings, when I mow the lawn, my wife's vacuum's hair. So, um, they, they do, they do shed twice a year heavily. So. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you, everybody.
Yep. Thanks, Aaron.
Uh, and next on my report this evening, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the committee is the COVID-19 updates. And there certainly are a number of them. They're, they're not necessarily, uh, they're all listed sort of under number two. Our feature for the evening is Mr. Brannigan and, and all that's going on in the high school. That seems to be the, the main event here tonight in terms of COVID updates. I would tell you that our dashboard is going to be down significantly tomorrow. That's my, uh, numbers that have indicated to me, we're going to be going from nine to, to down below five at least, if not lower. I know the town numbers are down in the twenties at this point. As of yesterday, I believe it was 21 or 22 or 23. Uh, so obviously positive signs all around. The governor indicated yesterday that 74% of adults had at least one shot in the vaccination process. Over, uh, three million have been fully vacinate vaccinated in, in Massachusetts. So we're, everything's pointing in the right direction. Um, you know, for a, a much better summer. I know the CDC came out with some suggested guidelines today. Uh, we'll see what happens with Mass Department of Public Health and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. Excuse me, but right now we have a policy, we have a masking policy that is in place and will continue to have that in place. So we'll not be unmasking on the basis of the CDC guidelines at this point. But if the school committee chooses to amend that policy moving forward in the next five weeks, um, six weeks moving forward, uh, then, then we'd, we'd certainly revisit that. So, you know, some quick COVID updates there and, and obviously like all year, uh, things are changing rapidly, but right now they're changing in the right direction. They're moving in the right direction. And, and I think that's the key here, uh, for people's safety. Um, that we have, we have had mitigation strategies. We have washed our hands. We have worn masks. We have social distance. And in our case, it's worked. Uh, there have been school systems around us that have been really significantly, uh, affected. And we have not been. We've, we've had a few teams, uh, that have had to quarantine. And we've had a few areas that have had to quarantine, but, uh, we have not had some, some of the significant numbers that other, uh, comparable schools and school systems have had. So, uh, that's good news for us, I think, and, and, uh, and not to say we're out of the woods because we need to keep working and we need to keep the mitigation strategies going. And, uh, as you see with all the pictures, um, you see masks in, in everyone. And, and sometimes the kids are a little closer than you want, but when the dog comes out and people flock, uh, that's just natural too. So then the teacher would hopefully say, boys or girls, you need to sort of separate yourselves a little bit. Uh, but, uh, that's where we're at with that. But really with regard to tonight, um, we have some updates from Mr. Paul Brannigan, who we're going to welcome onto the stage tonight. Uh, if you have any general COVID-19 update questions, I can certainly answer them. Uh, but these more specific ones coming up are specifically addressed to really the reopening of the high school and, and the, the governors and the, the commissioners proclamation that high schools had to be open by March 17th. If you saw the news at all today, um, Brockton High School had applied for a waiver because they felt like they could not fit everyone in. Uh, the DEES sent their crew down, the DEES police. And they said, uh, no, you will open on, on May 17th per, uh, the commissioner and the governor's orders. And, uh, they're going to open on May 17th. So, uh, Paul Brannigan and his administrative team, uh, have been working hard to make this happen. A survey was done to parents and, uh, Paul, I don't want to steal your thunder. Uh, so I'll let, I'll let you, I'll let you take it away and talk about the process you've gone through in anticipation of a full return for cohorts one, two, and three. And I want to say full return because we still have about 130 students out, um, in our online learning academy. And go ahead, Mr. Brannigan.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Lynch. Good evening, everyone. Um, as Mr. Lynch had said, that we are preparing for our full return um, of cohorts one, two, and three, um, beginning on Monday, May 17th. And we have been working at this in anticipation, as you know, that when the, during the month of March, when the lower grades were working on their full return, then the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had shared with high schools that be ready. Um, and that when they made the announcement, you were going to have two weeks to be able to prepare. So with that kind of statement that was made, we began our work in the preparation. And unfortunately for us, that with the way that we co-horted at the high school, um, by grade level, um, it actually worked in our advantage, which was not kind of something we were even thinking about when we were building that last summer uh, in fall, but also when we built the second semester schedule during the month of November, December and January. Um, so basically what we did is that as we transitioned out of the old high school into the new high school, um, what we did is we made sure the fact that we created the schedule, meaning everyone's placement in the building is if we were all back in the building together. Because we knew that that day would come where the state would mandate that high schools would be back. And I think it's important to note that if we were in a different situation in the old high school, we probably would have tried to bring our students back a lot sooner. But, um, the old building was just not in a, in a position to accommodate any of that of the chances of bringing all of our students back. Being now in the new high school, um, we knew the fact we needed a little bit of time just to get ourselves settled in the school. Um, and having the, the cohorts allowed for us to be able to do that, to work out some of the patterns of our students and, and the way that they move through the building and then be able to welcome our students back. So, um, we're really pleased that we have a home for everybody. Um, that all of our teachers have their spaces. We have a very few amount of teachers that are traveling. Um, the merging of the cohorts together, there were a few classes, especially in our AP program that had, um, the combining that would come together on Monday. And, um, and that has gone smoothly as well. Um, as Mr. Lynch had said, that we have about 130 families that have chosen to remain fully remote, which we respect that decision. Um, one of the things that we did with our families is that because of the complexity of the high school schedule, that we needed to really make sure that our families had a, a really good understanding of, of the impact that that would have in the return. And especially want to ask the, the question of why, like what is the reasoning you want to return? Is if it's because you wanted to be in the new building, we welcome you, but we want you to understand the potential fallout of a schedule. Um, and conversely, but we also wanted to make sure that if a student was really in a place of challenge, um, that we really wanted to get them back in the building. And so what we've been working on over the last week and a half is taking any students who were selecting to return and really revamping their schedule, identifying areas where we could put them into an in-person class. Um, and the nice part about this building is that the classrooms are bigger that allow for us to be able to put an extra desk in the room or an extra two desks in a room. Um, but it's also then identifying what is in the best interest of the student. Uh, what I mean by that is, is that if you look at some of our 12th graders that are coming back, when they enter the building on Monday, they have eight school days left before they are completing their senior year. So is it prudent to be able to put them in a, in a brand new class in person? Or if they're thriving in their remote classes, but they just really want to be back to be with their senior class? Then does it mean the fact that we just have them maintain their virtual classes from the building? And so using the learning commons, um, we've been able to, to maximize that as well. So, um, we're ready to go. We've, um, our cafeteria is ready or the now called the student commons. Uh, the athletic center is ready, um, the custodial team, the assistant principals, Sergeant Graham. Um, it has been an all ditch effort to make sure that we're ready. Um, as you know, we're in a major construction, uh, project and the second, the last phase, which is a significant phase is beginning. Um, which means we only have one way in and one way out. And so we are a bit concerned about the traffic patterns. Um, but we have done a lot of research of really the flow of traffic. Um, last week we did some, um, study because it was really the first full week in the building. Um, of really where we did some studies of really the flow of cars out and timing that as well as the school buses. And then this week we flipped it, that, um, our school buses are being dismissed at 1:45. And then our student drivers and walkers and pickups are at 1:50. And we're seeing if the flow of traffic out to Wood Street is actually going a little bit smoother and faster. Um, to then make the determination if that will be our pattern, um, through the remainder of the school year, especially for the eight days that our seniors will be here as well. Because once they move, once their school year comes to an end, their, um, presence on campus in terms of cars um, will be not as, as much. So, um, we're, we're ready. We can't wait to have our school back together again. Um, it's important to note just for the school committee members that, um, we had been welcoming our cohort four students into the building all this week for tours. And even though that they're deciding to stay remote, um, they're part of our school community. We want them to see their new home. Um, and it's been great to have many of them come in and the student council has been serving as tour guides and they've done fabulous at it. Um, of, of bringing students around, letting them become engaged in their school and getting them excited about coming back in September.
Thank you, Paul. I do want to also add that on Tuesday, uh, Paul, myself and Brian met with members of the union. Um, we, uh, um, we were asked to by Sam and Kate. Um, we, we met with essentially, uh, members, uh, from the high school who had specific questions. Uh, they gave us the questions beforehand. Um, we answered all their questions. Um, I do not believe they had any issues. The building is designed, um, you know, the real issue um, that comes up, um, that we essentially don't have control over is social distancing. Um, and that applies to faculty and staff and people have to socially distance as they're supposed to. And, uh, Paul's been very good about it, as has the administration. If they, they see people not socially distancing, they talk to them and explain why. Um, and they do the same and teachers have done the same. And so that's, uh, that was the only piece that, you know, we're not ever going to be able to control a hundred percent because it's up to individuals to make sure they maintain the social distancing. But all the other pieces that they asked us for, um, were already in place in the new high school. There was nothing that needed, uh, in my mind to be changed. And I think everybody walked away from that conversation pretty well. So I do want to add that piece. And if people have specific questions for, uh, Paul, um, go right ahead. Rich, go right ahead.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Mr. Brannigan. Sounds like an awesome plan. And I just wanted to say how exciting it is that you managed to get some of those remote seniors into the learning commons. Uh, such a great use of that space. Um, and also I, I, I fully agree with what you're, you're saying about kind of limiting the dis, this disruption, but still allowing them to appreciate that beautiful new building that they've got. Um, my question, and I think you kind of, you kind of mentioned this already, but, um, how many of the previously remote uh, students are returning in person?
So, um, we had, just to give some historical context, that when we did the survey back in December for second semester, we had about 20 students come back from COVID four into, back into hybrid. Um, interestingly enough, that we had about 20 students from hybrid that went fully remote. So, um, when we did the survey, um, in before, in April, um, we have 13 students that are returning. Um, one family decided they work, we had two families, excuse me, decided that they were coming back. And then ultimately decided that after their own reflection and conversations as a family, they decided they were not going to return and maintain their, their remote schedule. Um, so, um, with the 13 families that are coming back, we've had two families reach out about going fully remote. And we've really been working with those families about the complexity of doing that. And I believe those students will be staying.
Got it. Thank you. And Mr. Chair, if it's okay, just one follow-up question. Um, uh, Mr. Brannigan, um, I think I know the answer to this, but is it safe to say that if we were in this exact same situation and had to bring these kids back into the old high school, that it would not be possible with the interior rooms and the size and all that?
Yeah, without a doubt. I, if we actually were in a position where, um, say in a hypothetical, that this building was not ready to open. And there was some, we all know there was a period of time in the winter months where we didn't know if we were getting into school during the school year. Um, I know that I had gone to Mr. Lynch and said, if that is, ends up being the case, we're going to have to apply for the waiver. Um, and the reasoning for it is what maybe the community doesn't know is the fact that we, the entire interior of the building was, was closed down. So all of the interior classrooms have not been used since March of 2020. And because of that, with the way the cohorts is that every time a teacher came into the building in the cohort, they owned the room. When they left and went remote, another teacher was owning the room on their in-person days. Um, so if we had the responsibility of bringing everyone back in that building without the able, the ability to use those interior spaces, it would have been impossible to do it in this building. Um, because all of our classrooms are, have windows, um, it was a game changer. And so when we moved into the building and I had to create the assignments and all of that, I did it based upon the, um, I, I did it based upon really a full return.
Excellent. Well, that's good news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Paul? And Paul, thank you very much. We appreciate.
Uh, Mr. Brannigan, I know you wanted to talk a little bit about the lights out ceremony and the, the 50 years of Middleboro High School, if you will.
Sure. Just really quickly, first and foremost, I want to thank, um, the school committee and Mr. Lynch for all of the support of our transition into the new building. Um, it has been really a, a great few weeks of, of navigating the school and watching our students um, be in their new home. And we've had more comments of students making things like, it looks like a college. Um, I've had a few bus drivers say that students who were dreading getting off the bus, couldn't wait to get off the bus and get into their school. Um, and so it's been really quite fun to watch, uh, our students navigate this new building. So I want to thank the Middleboro community, um, for really giving the greatest gift they could give, um, to our students into the future students that will come up to the high school. Um, and we're looking forward to opening up the building this summer for the public to be able to come in and, um, and see this beautiful, beautiful facility. And, um, but really one of the things that I think was really quite special is the closing of the old high school. We know the fact that the 50 years of history of that building is strong and it's significant. And the base of alumni and families that are still connected to this town is, um, is significant. And so we wanted to make sure the fact that we sent the old building out in style. Um, so last Friday and Saturday night, we were able to open the building. And I think it's important to thank, uh, our director of facilities, Jim Hutchinson, the custodial crew, the facilities team, um, for really working together, um, to really get that building in a position where we could open it up to the public and really give them an experience of walking through almost every aspect of their school. Um, and between Friday and Saturday night, um, we probably had, um, over a thousand people come through the building. Um, one of the coolest things is all the letters that were written around the building of signatures to stories to thanking the building of, um, just really giving them an unbelievable educational experience and journey over their time. And on Saturday night, we had the lights out ceremony where we probably had about three to 400 people um, on the front driveway of the high school. Um, and we did a very modest ceremony and, uh, special thanks to Mr. Young and to Mr. Lynch um, for sharing their thoughts about the significance of this time in, in our community. Um, to Mr. Rob DeRozes, who is the chair of the building committee, um, was also an alumni and a parent of students as well. And so it was important for him to share his thoughts about the journey of, of really, um, closing our beloved school, but also the excitement of opening up the new one. Manny Buchant, the senior class president, shared a few words and upon completion, um, we were able to, um, officially turn off the lights. Um, and if you were to come to the high school or drive by on the Friday night, it was, we kept every light on in the building. Um, so that you could see the building lit up for the last time. And then on Saturday night, they officially were shut off. Um, and as everyone who came and visited, as they left, they each got either a black or an orange ribbon. And they were asked to tie it on to the bridge. And so by the time we closed on Saturday night, that, um, both sides of the bridge railings were completely covered in ribbon. And, uh, and we began to close the building down. So it was quite a, a special night, I think, for our town.
Thank you, Mr. Brannigan. Uh, any further questions for Mr. Brannigan? Uh, it was a nice ceremony. Uh, I did appreciate being able to say a few words about my experience there. Uh, my own children, my brothers and sisters who all went there and, um, you know, it was, it's, it's difficult to say goodbye sometimes to an old friend. I equated it to a sort of a less of a wake and a funeral and more of a celebration of life, which we try to treat it as. Um, because it, it was a, a good old girl who, who served us very well throughout the years. And, um, I have very fond memories and I had friends, uh, emailing me before the ceremony and, and certainly texting and emailing after saying, you know, wow, I, I wish, I, I'm in Maryland, I wish I had a chance. Or I'm in Swambsquad, I didn't get a chance, but I wish I had, but, uh, you know, wow, I wish, I'm in Maryland, I wish I had a chance, or I'm in Swambsquad, I didn't get a chance, but I wish I had, but, you know, that sort of thing. So it was, it was well done, Paul, and I appreciate that. I would like to call them Branigan Productions. But Paul orchestrated that entire event. We thank Sean Siciliano for working on the sound and all the work that was needed there. Clearly, when the people started arriving, more people and more people, we needed more speakers that were louder. Also, we'd like to thank Justin Pittsley and the MHS Band for performing that evening. And that was, that was an awesome, fun time, too. He also invited alumni, student directors to help direct the band and it was, became more of a community event. So thank you. Thank you, Bran. We do appreciate that. And if there are no further questions there, I'll go on to my next item, but I know the chair had indicated he wanted to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure a couple of things, although we normally don't talk about, you know, in the past, anything that's changed from guidance wise. We haven't addressed that night. I do want to bring up a couple of things because I see a couple of things in the chat about masks. So the CDC changed their regs today. Some people have asked how we came up with our policy. Our policy was developed with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and DESI, which is Department of Early and Secondary Child Education. Those policies are school committee policies, so school committee would have to make a decision on what to do. We will review those policies as we have reviewed every policy when they've changed over a period in time. So that's the piece about masks. There's nothing that's going to change. And now we're going to look at what we have to do and go from there. I'm sure there'll be guidance from the state, hopefully sooner than later. So we'll deal with that when it comes. The other piece that somebody had put out there was about, are we planning to have in-person meetings again, which can also be live for maximum attendance? And so the answer to that is yes. But I want to make clear the following, which is the schools are currently taxed for space. Obviously, people are doing a wide variety of things that are that are moving classrooms around and everything like that. The one thing that I do not want to do is cause more work for our custodial staff. And they'd have to, whatever area we went in, they'd have to clean up. And depending on how many people there would be more. So as long as that's taken care of, we may do it before the end of school year, but my sense will be it'll probably start after the school year. The plan is to move school committee meetings to the new high school. But again, one thing we talked about before doing that was waiting until after everything, people had had time in the new building to make sure everything was working properly and doing what it needed to do. So we're really looking to that either over the summertime or at the end of, at the beginning of September. So we will be going back to live and people can attend. And as soon as that happens, I will let everybody know. But again, I just don't want to make it so that staff has more work because of us. And that's why. The plan is also to maintain the way it's been now, which is that people are able to see us on Facebook and YouTube and be able to comment in the way they are commenting. And that's fine. So I just want to point that out and let everybody know those pieces. So Brian, I'll turn it back to you then. I think I answered most of those questions.
Yeah, I think most of them were answered. I just do have a point. There was a question about, are the are the mask policies being enforced equally throughout the district? And I would respond by saying that the masking policy, well, it's called facial coverings or face coverings, basically has a paragraph in it that says, if students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with a parent guardian to determine whether an exception is appropriate, or the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning until such time as they can comply with the requirements or the requirement is lifted. So it's incumbent upon the building principal to work with families, to try to meet with families, to resolve issues with regard to masking. It's not always going to come out in what the outcome that a parent may want. We understand that, but this is a policy that's designed for the entire school district. It involves faculty, staff and students, and it's designed for everyone's safety. It's designed as a mitigation strategy for everyone's safety. And there's always the option. I see another question about liability. Who is liable for harm that could arise from prolonged mask use? Basically, a parent always has the right to, we have an online learning academy this year to keep their students home and get, you know, an appropriate education with our online learning academy this year. If masking, if masking is an issue with them. Obviously, we have medically documented excuses where students can be excused from wearing masks with medical documentation, et cetera. So we do have the policy. It's called EBCFA, face coverings. It is online. It is on the district website, if anyone cares to look at it. It's, it's not a policy that makes a lot of people happy. I realize that things are freeing up in society and freeing up. But at this point, the school committee can amend the policy. This policy goes, went through three readings through the policy subcommittee and the school committee back in last July and August. And this policy was voted on August 27th to be in effect for the entire year. And it was recommended by the mass associations of school committees. And it also came through all the research that Department of Elementary, Secondary Ed and the Department of Public Health had done in Massachusetts. So just some further clarification, like I said, I realize that people are, society's freeing up and that people, even some teachers are asking if they could go without the mask because they're fully vaccinated. And at this point, the answers are no, or the answer is no, because we have this policy in place. And we have about 25 or 30 school days remaining, 25 school days remaining in the school year at this point. So.
Just a couple of things related to the policy so people know. Somebody had asked about how parents can amend these policies. You can participate in a policy. This policy was part of what we had to send to DESI in order to open our schools in September. It was a requirement of that piece. So that's why it was included. We will, we will be, you know, again, there's nothing that has come from the state that said we can lessen that requirement. And we will have, as soon as we get information, we will go from there. And that's, that's what's happened with virtually every policy that's come down. For example, transportation policy has changed over a period of time. Number of students over a period of time. Obviously, a wide variety of things to do with sports. And, and everything has changed over a period of time. And so every time it does, we'll bring it here, have a conversation about it. And people are more than welcome to participate in that conversation. So, thank you.
Okay. Next up is the summer athletic program with Mr. Ryan Silvy. I'd invite Ryan Silvy, our athletic director, to come on to the stage here in Stream yard. I know Sean is going to try to facilitate that. Siciliano?
Or maybe not.
I know that Ryan was prepared to come on. We've handled a couple of little technical glitches tonight. We apologize for folks at home.
I think I sent Mr. Sylvia a text message, but he doesn't get reception in the new building. So I'm thinking he's going to join when he sees it on YouTube. There he is. Ryan, can you turn your YouTube off, please?
Can everybody hear it?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Listening on YouTube. Yeah. So thanks for inviting me. I asked Mr. Lynch if I could, sorry, I had my hat on out in the fields all day. I just came in. Mr., I asked Mr. Lynch if I could present the summer clinics that we've done over the past few years. So three years ago in 2018, we kind of expanded the summer clinics and offered all of our head coaches a chance to run a summer program. We kind of created a template where each program runs for Monday through Thursday for about 12 hours total over the course of four days, usually a three hour clinic for four days. There's some flexibility there. Where we've given coaches a chance to maybe do a six week program, but they only meet one day a week and it's a shorter amount of time. So for the most part, it's that four day clinic structure, but some of the more individual in nature sports like track, swimming are doing some things a little bit differently. So the request tonight is to continue with that program for this year. We did it in 2018, 2019 and 2020. Between 18 and 19, we saw like a pretty significant increase in participation and programs. And then 2020, obviously with COVID, participation numbers went down a little bit, but still held pretty strong. We were able to run those programs safely throughout the summer. And really looking forward this summer to just continuing with those programs, possibly offering new programs, depending on which coaches are available to run their sport. And show off the new facility. The new athletic facility has, has been amazing to to just be able to manage and watch the kids experience the, you know, the turf's been going for a little while, the turf stadium. But the baseball and softball fields, our facilities crew has gotten looking great. We've had a few home games already. We actually had a chance to bring our Nichols Middle School softball team up when the field just happened to be open one day where both high school teams were off campus. So really, the summer program is, is going to be hopefully expanded a little bit and we have to work with our maintenance and facilities crew with the ongoing construction project to make sure that schedule fits in with everything that's going on still. But so I don't know if it's something that, that needs to be voted on or discussed, but I just kind of wanted to present it and say that, you know, we're looking forward to continuing the program.
If I recall correctly, Brian, we had voted on this each of the last couple of years that you've done it. So it just made sense to put it out there and vote on it. So if no one objects, chair wants to take a motion for the summer program.
So moved.
Very second.
Second.
Discussion. Other than we appreciate everything you do, Brian, because this is, this is a great opportunity for kids and we were able to do it last year and kids were able to have some athletic opportunity over the summer. So we really appreciate all the coaches and everybody who goes out and does this. So thank you. So with that, I'll ask for a vote. Mr. Oakland?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So you're all set, Ryan. So thank you.
Great. Thanks for the yes vote. We're going to finalize this schedule and probably looking at somewhere in the range of 200 to 300 students participating this summer with the new weight room and the gym and the turf. So looking forward to it.
And Ryan, this is not, not just a program for high school students.
No, this is really more of a focus on elementary and middle school students. There's some youth programs, youth basketball, youth soccer, youth lacrosse. We're looking to get youth track and field going this summer. Really, the only focus on the high school students is the strength and conditioning program, which will be in the new weight room at the new high school. And then we have some community service opportunities for them to work with the middle school students and the elementary school students in those clinics. So it's, it's a great program and we're looking forward to kind of getting it back going in the right direction. You know, once this pandemic is kind of behind us a little bit.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, guys.
And we'll move on tonight to invite Dr. Gates on to the, on to the stage. And she's just going to give us an update on where we stand with technology. Been a big year for tech, coming and going. And she's going to give us an update on where she is and sort of also double up with the, sort of the MCAS current status, moving into that piece. She could take both of these, obviously, because the, the main piece of tech now is providing the technology because all of our students are taking the MCAS on Chromebooks. So Dr. Gates, welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch and committee members. It's great to join you all this evening. Yeah, it's been quite a busy, busy year for technology and the work continues, of course. With the opening of the new high school, we're continuing to work out any issues that do arise. You sometimes don't know what the issue is until you start using the equipment. So we've been able to track down many of the small issues that have arisen since we've occupied the wonderful new school, which is just absolutely beautiful. And it's a really just a deep thanks to the community for allowing us to have such a beautiful facility to educate the generations of Middleboro students to come. You know, in addition to working on some of the tech in the new high school, we were, of course, pulling out tech from the old high school from BrightLinks phones, desktops, all sorts of different technology to repurpose throughout the district. We've been ramping up last week into this week for MCAS, which is beginning next week at the elementary schools. We have deployed, well, tomorrow we will have deployed a total of 875 Chromebooks specifically for MCAS testing. The elementaries have each received their 275 Chromebooks each. The middle school is getting their delivery tomorrow. So our, our students that are taking MCAS here in the district will all be taking them on our new Chromebooks, which will be great. We're also preparing to support remote MCAS. So for the students that have remained in our online learning academy, they are still required to take MCAS. I'd like to thank Mr. Louis Steinberg and Mrs. Eva Crawford for their work in supporting our remote students to test out. They have to do a browser check to ensure the compatibility of their browser as well as the speed of their home internet. And we've been able to gather what issues we have there and we are working on to resolve any of those issues that have come up. We're also shortly preparing to do some online advanced placement testing. We have a few students that, that need that accommodation in order to take their AP test. So we are still in full swing in the IT department, also, you know, additionally handling all of the, the day-to-day help tickets that come in. But the team has done a tremendous job. I'm really proud of their teamwork, their collaboration and just really dedication to excellence. Because we know that everything that we do has an impact on the classroom and our responsibility is to make sure that every child has access to their education. And we know technology plays a large part in that. That's all I have for today unless there's questions in the committee. I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gates.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. Have a great evening, everyone.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to next year's calendar. We've had some discussions about this the last couple of meetings and we're going to, I, hopefully Sean will be able to put calendars up, the optional calendars up. That's draft one. If we, Sean, if we could go to draft four? Please?
We don't have draft four. Does anyone have draft four?
I believe it was in the Dropbox.
There were only two in the Dropbox, which is one and two, which is what I have.
And I apologize for that to the committee because we should have had draft four. We can certainly, the chair can, can address some of the issues we discussed. Moving on to this, this calendar, some of the things that we had talked about, and I will certainly join in on that discussion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. So what we had talked about was making sure that there was, it was everything that we had talked about at the previous meeting. And we had looked at starting school before Labor Day. Primarily so that there'd be a start to school. And then when Labor Day hit, we know there's Jewish holidays afterwards. Part of it was, because I did hear from some parents and said that they would prefer, you know, their kids are not going to go to school on Jewish holidays and they would prefer their kids to have an opportunity to go to school before they took time off. Then we looked at a wide variety of ways in which where to move the professional development days. We maintained one in March. I think Meg, you were the one who had talked about because March was such a long month, making sure that we included the piece in March. Hold on one second. I'm trying to bring up my piece that was there, too. And I think that.
Mr. Chair, if that were not put in the Dropbox, then I think it might be worth Mr. Chair, if that were not put in the Dropbox, then I think it might be worth waiting a couple of weeks for us to get this information to the school committee's hands.
Yeah, that's fine. I didn't realize that that one.
I thought it was dropped, that last draft that we had worked on, even number three and number four. So I think that I think if they're still numbered the way they were, then I'm thinking that we probably should.
That's fine. If no one objects, we'll just bring it up for the next meeting and we'll have all the things. I didn't realize that both weren't in the Dropbox, but all the other two weren't in the Dropbox, so I apologize for that.
The only other thing, Mr. Chair, is if my administrative assistant perhaps changed draft number four to draft number one for tonight. As I look at draft number one for tonight, I'm looking, I'm looking at a document that that is similar to draft four. I didn't know the numbers had been changed, but she did change the date at the top. So this looks like it's reflective of what we had talked about as potential changes, which indicates that faculty would come back on the 30th and 31st of August. We would have our first day of school on the first of September, the Wednesday before Labor Day. We would go Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then we would have a four-day weekend for Labor Day, Saturday, Sunday. And the Monday would be Labor Day and the Tuesday would be an additional day, which also accounts for a Jewish holiday. That would move on and we would have six half-days as per contract. And those are indicated on this sheet. We would also have professional development days, which are the full days in green. And those days would be the 12th of November, which is the day after Veterans Day, which is a day off, which in effect would give families a four-day weekend from the 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th of November. And then there would be another really five-day weekend in November at Thanksgiving time. It would also create a half-day on the 23rd of December for for families. It would be professional development in the afternoon for teachers. Another day, January 14th, would be a full professional development day. That would be the fourth. As you know, there are four professional development days in the contract. That fourth green day would be January 14th, which would also provide a four-day weekend for Martin Luther King Weekend in a break in January. There would be a half-day in February prior to the traditional February vacation break. There would be a release day in March, on the 18th of March. And then moving on to April, the 15th would be a holiday for Good Friday, followed by the traditional April vacation. Again, a half-release day on the 27th of of May prior to a three-day weekend for Memorial Day. We would then, the scheduled final day would be on, for for students would be on the 17th. And with a release day on that day also. And teachers would be a full day of work. And then the final day would be the 20th at the end of the end of the year. So that looks like that's exactly what we talked about the other day, Mr. Chair. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that exactly looks like what we had. So so we sort of throw that out for discussion with people.
So I apologize for the confusion at the beginning of that, but but this is clearly what we had, what we had changed over to, and I didn't realize the four was changed to a one.
No, no problem. The other piece that's a real change from this year was we're back to Good Friday off. That made sense for us, especially staffing-wise. We had a lot of staff go out on Good Friday for holiday obligations.
Are any questions from the school committee? Is this something you want to take some time to think about over the next two weeks? Or is this something you want to to take action on this evening?
The other thing we can do too is we can post it online so people can see it.
That's what we've done last year and then we've done actually the last two years in a row, and that's been that's been helpful.
Mr. Chair?
Please go right ahead.
Could we, I would be in favor of definitely posting it, but also just sort of giving people that the idea that this is where we're headed or what we're leaning towards, just so that people can start to kind of think about what that's going to look like. If if that's how people kind of feel like they're going to be leaning. And if and if we really feel like there need to be revisions made, then I definitely agree we should work on that tonight. That's two more weeks of people waiting for what their summer is going to look like.
Somebody asked, is June 20th a later last day than in prior normal years? Not really. This year it runs to pretty close to then, right, Brian?
Yeah, the last day technically is the 17th. That 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 June 20th, the red day, is Juneteenth, the new state holiday, which is being recognized, which is normally on the 19th, but is being recognized on the 20th potentially by the district.
Do people have particular questions about this calendar? Does this seem reasonable to everybody in the sense that we will post it so people could?
Yeah.
You know, in the past, we've sort of, this has been the calendar we've sort of gone with and posted out just in case for people to look at and take a look at, but knowing full well that that was more than likely going to be our calendar.
Yep, Mr. Chair, that that sounds great to me. It looks like it addressed all the questions that we had last time. So it feels pretty good, but I like what Teresa mentioned about just posting it, but having people know that this looks like the one we're going to go with and then we vote on it in a couple of weeks.
That sounds good. Any other thoughts?
So so, Mr. Chair, do you want to approve this as a draft? So we can then post it as a draft and then have a final vote in two weeks? So you just want to post it for two weeks?
I think in the past, we've just posted it. So that would be the way I would prefer to go, what we've normally done in the past, if that makes sense.
Okay. I know that Mr. Siciliano is still on and listening. Mr. Sean, if you can post this tomorrow morning or tonight as the potential calendar for next year? That would be greatly appreciated. If it's tomorrow morning, that's fine too. And if there's nothing else, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Next time our agenda was the high school building project. We had a meeting this past Wednesday. The Fontaine Brothers have taken ownership of the high school, the old high school, to begin the taking it down. It'll be taken down in stages. The first takedown will be the academic wing that's closest to the current high school. And then it will spread out and it currently the final date for everything is October of this year. We are, as we have been from the very beginning, under budget. So we're proud of that. And everything seems to have been, everything seems to have been going smoothly with the new high school. We knew there were some issues that still needed to be resolved, but those issues were resolved on weekends and at night times and at various times when they can. They're all small and for the most part minor in nature. And they'll continue to be resolved throughout and most of everything, most of everything in the new high school will be completed by the summertime. There's no safety issues whatsoever in the new school or anything like that 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 stopped us from opening, obviously. Any questions about the building? I also put down there, as everyone saw, sort of the walkthroughs that the committee went on, the new building, and obviously the committee went on, was knew about the lights-out buildings, so. Go from there.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'd be interested in the in the committee's reaction to to their walk through the building, the new high school.
Absolutely.
You going to recognize, or you would like me to, Mr. Chair?
No, go right ahead. Sorry, I missed.
I saw Meg. Meg, go ahead.
Meg, go right ahead. Apologize.
Thank you. That's okay. I just wanted to say how impressive it all is. I'm in a new building myself and it's 10 years old. And just the difference in the technology and the setup and everything from 10 years ago to now is immense. Just simple things like that you have the built-in chargers and the plugs for phones and all of the technology that kids use, just something that that like that is such a minute little detail, but it's it makes such a big difference. And then just seeing like the different stages was really, really nice. And it's just, it's a beautiful, beautiful school.
Teresa, go right ahead.
Well, parent perspective, myself, of course, going through that building and seeing, like Meg said, the stages, being in there in February and then seeing it this past weekend was just incredible. I especially enjoyed the cultural walls that have been done. Those are just absolutely beautiful and I love that that they're, the history of our great little town is being showcased in that school. So that was really great. But as a parent, just my two kids coming home and just, you know, their their excitement for it. And of course, my senior won't get too, too long in there, but it's just really exciting for them. And my freshman is just blown away. It's really quite something. So I look forward to allowing them to kind of get their feet wet at this stage and hopefully in the fall, coming back to a more, you know, life-filled school and just giving more opportunities to just utilize everything that is that has been put out there for them. So thank you.
No problem. Anybody else? Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Sure. Yeah, love the opportunity to go back there now that it's all, you know, pretty much done. And I got a chance to talk to the the head architect and I'm totally blanking on his name at the moment. Very nice guy. And my question for him was, it feels when you're in that building that there's something different about this and it's something positive and and just something that could have a measurable impact on learning. And so my question for him was, you know, can you talk a little bit about what went into the design? And and what is is that feeling that I'm getting here based on something specific? And he did bring up a few key points that I thought were really interesting, probably predictable maybe, but natural light, indoor like climate comfort and flexible learning environments. And he said that there's been studies done on these things. And the one that I thought that was the most interesting, because natural light and, you know, indoor air quality are pretty obvious things. But the flexible learning environment thing I thought was very interesting in that, you know, sometimes people really struggle in a standard, you know, stand-up-and-teach classroom setting. And and they've built into the high school all these unique little places where, you know, like the Learning Commons or those, I'm blanking on the name of those areas, but those little areas, the collaboration stations, I think it was, that could possibly give someone what they need at that point in their learning career to get past any of those issues that they might have and could actually usher them back into the classroom. So I just thought that the, some of the design in that building is just incredible. And it was really cool to hear from his perspective why they did what they did. So, yeah.
Rich, that was Jim Barrett and Jim Barrett is a principal with DRA and he's been with us since the very beginning, right, right from the get-go. We've had a number of architects that have sort of worked on different phases of the project. Scott Wooden is is an architect that has just since left DRA to take another experience, a job experience. But he was one of the primary architects of this building. And he pointed out those three things that you also noted, but he also wanted to point out, he wanted to feature the hub of the building. He wanted to feature that that piece in the middle where the rotunda is, where it's an open space, where where even downstairs and upstairs, first and second floor, it's a gathering place for students. It's a passing place for students. And and I think that that really, that rotunda area has has really been a feature that the students have really enjoyed. And I just think it's it's just a gorgeous space too.
Absolutely.
With that old mill feel of of Middleboro, that old, you know, the shoe factory and then different things like that. That whole, the columns are all the brick and it just has that feel. But it was definitely done with those things in mind, no doubt about it.
Other thoughts or comments? All right.
Oh, we had one.
Oops, sorry. Who did I miss? Oh, Zeke, sorry. Apologize.
That's okay. No, I'm jealous. I'm so jealous of all the students. I graduated in 2017. So, you know, to see everyone, what all the students get nowadays, just like, ah, they're going, they're already going to college. What's going on? So I'm absolutely very jealous. And I got to talk to the to the architect as well. And I I remember I was offered to be on the student committee.
Divisioning committee.
Yeah, the, I was, oh, yeah, I was on that, like my senior year. And I asked the architect if he had used any of our input and he said that he assured me that he did. So I was, I was very happy with that. So that was, that was my biggest, you know, question for him. So, yeah, I was very excited about that.
So anybody else? All right, then we will move on. Next item on our agenda was, I had MASC for nominations forms. We normally do our delegate and alternative delegate to the to our Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of Super Tenants Convention in November, which I believe is going to be held in person. That's the last I've heard from MASC in the conversation.
I know they're going to try, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that's the plan. And so usually the sign-up has to happen in early June for a break. We've always sent somebody, so I just wanted to check with that and see who was interested, that type of thing. Teresa, go right ahead.
Well, certainly I recognize that you should, as the chair, certainly someone who's been doing this in the past, absolutely be the the person who goes, but should you be unable to attend, I would certainly love to take that opportunity if if necessary.
Great. That's fantastic. Anybody else have any comments about that? Then seeing no one, the chair want to entertain a motion to make me the delegate and Teresa the alternative.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We'll go around for any discussion. Seeing that you're all invited to attend, Zeke, you should get a packet pretty soon that'll go over what that that entails. So that should be coming to you sooner than later because we have to sign you up for all MASC materials. So with that, any other comments or questions? So we'll go for a vote. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And then the the convention is in actuality the first, I believe, on Wednesday through Saturday in November. So just so everybody knows, it was already been out, I got a booklet with it, probably because I was the delegate last year. So it will go from there. Consent agenda. Chair want to entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Right or second?
Second.
Consent agenda is just approval of warrants in the meetings for April 1st. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have in the past taken up the reopening with a vote. So the chair want to entertain a motion to approve the Middleboro High School reopening to full-time on May 17th. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none. We'll go for the vote. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Before I go into executive session, I just want to go back to, it's not a a piece that we had hoped to talk about tonight. It was just because the CDC put out the thing about masks, we will look at it, we will have that discussion. And again, things have changed over a period in time and we will, we will address it. Unfortunately, it wasn't on the agenda tonight, so it wasn't the plan to have a lengthy conversation about masks. So I'll make sure that when the time comes that people have the opportunity to have that opportunity. So I'll make sure that when the time comes that people have the opportunity to have that opportunity. Um, with that, uh, the chair wants to entertain a motion to enter an executive session for procedure number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, I do so declare. It's around all contracts that we have because we are moving into a, a contractual year coming up. And the second procedure is to comply with, uh, the act under authority or in general special law, uh, for a federal grant in, uh, aid requirements and executive session minutes, which we're going to approve. We will only re, come back to adjourn. With that, uh, chairman entertained that motion.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Stevens? We may have lost Mr. Stevens. Mr. Stevens is reconnecting. Mr. Stevens, we're voting on executive session?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, we will, um, see you in two weeks. Thank you very much, everybody. Good day.